Are we up on YouTube? We are not up quite yet on Facebook. It's still working. At least, I think so. Audio's good on YouTube. Bear with us, YouTubers, we're trying to get Facebook going, so just give us one moment here. This thing's gonna work or not? There we go. I think we're going now. Can you refresh and see if you see it on there? Hey, everybody, sorry, had some physical difficulties, but I think we've got this rolling now, so we'll just give it a minute for folks to populate. Just give another minute here for folks to join us. Hello, good evening, welcome. Maybe just about 40 seconds, we'll get going here. What do we have on YouTube? We got folks there. Okay, great. All right, 12 seconds. All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our second Belgrade City Schools Virtual Town Hall. We are glad that you are joining us this evening and coming to you live from our board office to have a couple of updates that we want to put out tonight and some announcements, and like last time, give folks an opportunity to ask any questions that they might have as we move forward. So, the first thing I wanted to share is just an update about Washington County's most recent numbers. So, at the website coronavirus.ohio.gov, on the top left-hand side, there is a drop-down menu for what's called the Ohio Public Health Advisory System. And as we explained last time on our Facebook Live, this is what's gonna drive the decision-making for how school is gonna operate once we start in the fall. So if we're a Level 1 or Level 2 county, which is yellow or orange, we'll be five days a week, full-time. If we are a red county, we would transition to hybrid learning, where we would have about half the students on Monday and Tuesday. On Wednesday, we would have a day off for cleaning of the building and for teachers to plan, and then Thursday and Friday, another set of children and students, and then we would forum there. And then if we were ever a Level 4 or purple county, then at that point, we would go to full remote learning, similar to what happened last March. So, if you go to that website, they have done a really great job updating it, and every Thursday, it provides us with an update on what Washington County's numbers are and why, what we are triggering and what we are not triggering as a result of that week. So, I'm gonna try to pull it up here, so I can read you numbers of what the most recent update is, if I can get the system to roll up. Now to Washington County. Okay, so, looking at Washington County's numbers, in the past two weeks, there have been 15 new cases of COVID-19 reported, and that, when you put that down into a cases per 100,000, it puts us at about 25.04 cases per 100. So this is important. One of the guidelines from the CDC has been that this triggers when you have more than 50 cases per 100K. So, we're at 25, which is half of the number that the CDC suggests would mean that there is an increase in community spread and would lead to other more stringent requirements. So, that is good. Our seven-day rolling average of cases, if you look back on July 15th, we were averaging 2.43 cases per day, and as of August 4th, our seven-day case average was all the way down to .14. So we've seen a large reduction in the last two weeks, or at least the last seven days, rolling number of new cases. Our ER visits are down from 1.29 on average back in July to .43 as of August 4th, and then we are not tracking any hospital admissions for a COVID-related 19 illness and have not had one since July 23rd. So, thanks to all the hard work that all of us in Washington County are doing, our case metrics are low, they are lower than even they were the last time that we spoke, and we will continue to monitor this very, very closely as the start of school begins. And like I said, every Thursday, this number is updated, and the governor will update it, and then I will have a meeting with the Health Department that afternoon, and we'll be in very close contact and monitoring these numbers very, very closely as we start school, so that if we have to make any adjustments or pivots, we will. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. That's again available at coronavirus.ohio.gov. I also wanted to bring families aware tonight that there is a COVID-19 travel advisory that Governor Dewine has put in place for a couple of different states that have more than 5% positivity rate, and those states are, it looks like Florida, Alabama, Mississippi, Idaho, Nevada, and it looks like New Mexico, though my geography may, that might have just been like a pop quiz on geography, which I may have passed. But it looks like New Mexico, which has about an 18% rate. That's probably Arizona, now using my logical thinking. But those states, if you travel to those six states, I would say Arizona, Nevada, Idaho, Mississippi, Alabama, or Florida, the governor has asked that if you are at one of those states that you quarantine for 14 days before returning. So, we just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. We're getting really close to crunch time, we're two weeks away from the opening of school, and would ask families to be mindful of that and to plan any travel accordingly. So, that is an update on our local cases. Are we still broadcasting?
We are. We are pausing off and on. We seem to be having a few small technical difficulties, but it's catching up with you. So currently, you are still broadcasting.
Now it says waiting for live video.
It's been spying.
It's not been good? Maybe it's because I, like, came off of it to go on the other screen?
See, so you're, it keeps popping up the same live video interrupted. It's been paused, will resume shortly. It's done a handful of times, but then it catches back up and then you come back on, so.
Let's see what it does now, if it will come back. Feel bad for the YouTubers, they're like, geez, Facebook, get it together. We're here and we're stable. Anything, Mrs. Keeling?
Ah, you're still, still live video interrupted right now. Yeah, so we're getting a couple of messages sent. It stopped, you're back live. Oh, no, I lost it.
I'm not loving this.
You're back. But now you're in.
Yeah, I just thought I would just start over again.
Okay.
I won't flip off the page this time, maybe that was what made it go bear-shaped. Sorry, YouTubers again, just bear with us. We had a number of people on that stream, so we want to make sure we can get everybody back. All right, we should be live again on Facebook, but it'll probably take a minute for folks to track over. Mrs. Keeling, if you could write in the comments of that other stream that we switched to a new stream, so that if folks at home that were following that stream can know that we're on a new site now, so.
If I say we are switching to a new stream? Please join us.
We had about 50 to 60, and I'm up to 12 now, so, sorry, everybody, we're trying, please bear with us, we're trying to get connected. Our YouTube has been more successful tonight so far than our Facebook stream, but hopefully, this will be more stable and we can keep going.
Okay, this appears that you are on and rolling.
Okay. We give folks another minute to get back on.
You may take a moment to review, you were kind of coming in and out of the COVID map information.
Yeah, so for folks that are just getting on, we apologize, we had difficulties, hopefully this will be a more streamlined stream of what we've been talking about. But we just talked a little bit about Washington County's local numbers, that their coronavirus.ohio.gov website has a really nice rolling tracking system, and the good news for Washington County is that our numbers were low as compared to most of the state two weeks ago, and we're happy to report that they're even lower now than they were two weeks ago. So, we appreciate the hard work that everyone's doing, and in case folks weren't able to see, we will be honoring these numbers very, very closely as we approach the start date in two weeks. And we have a standing meeting with the Health Department on Thursdays when this information is newly released, so that we can go over it and can have an idea, keep our finger right on the pulse of what's going on in our community, and make any pivots that we might need to, so. All right, so that's our local numbers. I wanted to give everybody an update on our survey results. So, we ended up receiving about 800 survey results out of about 950 to 1,000 students, so we were very, very pleased with the response rate. We really appreciate that. Thank you very much for taking the time to fill out that survey and for letting us know what your intentions are. We were able to, and are still trying to track down a couple of folks that we haven't heard from yet, but as of today, we had about 30% of the district elect to go virtual learning, and about 70% of the district elect to be in-person every day. So, we are working directly with families about logistics of that. If you are a 6 through 12, excuse me, a 7 through 12 student, if you signed up during that initial two-week rollout, you'll be working with Blue Sky Academy, and they will be reaching out to you later this week or early next week to do registration. And we sent out an important survey for folks in those grade levels to fill out for Blue Sky. So, please check our website or our social media pages for that link, and that needs to be completed as soon as possible, so that you can be formally enrolled. The first survey, just let us know what your intentions are. This survey is now directly with Blue Sky, so that you can get onboarded into their systems.
For high school students?
For high school students, yeah, this is for high school students. And then, as we move forward, students that elect to go virtual, we will be using the PEAK system in-house. But during that initial week, two-week rollout, it'll be Blue Sky, and then from moving forward, we'll have students work on PEAK. If they, for some reason, want to change what they were doing before, but it would be education provided virtually. So, if you are a K6 student, you will be assigned a Belgrade City School teacher. Those class assignments are being made as we speak, and I believe our hope to be posted tomorrow. Is that correct? Tomorrow by 3:00. So, we've had a couple of calls today and folks at home asking, so tomorrow at 3:00, K6 class rosters will be announced and teacher assignment both for virtual and in-person learners. So, we'll have that information out to you tomorrow. If you are a K6 student, the first day of virtual learning will be just like the first day of school, which I believe, if memory serves, is August 24th. And if you are a Blue Sky student, which is our 7 through 12, then we will begin school for you on September the 8th, and that will allow us to get all the materials ordered and in place and in two students' hands prior to the first day. So we'll just need a little bit more lap time to get those materials ordered in place, which is why they'll start on September the 8th for Blue Sky Academy students in grades 7 through 12. So, questions on that, please put them on the chat, in the YouTube chat, the Facebook chat, and we will circle back and we will answer those for you. Another announcement we have this evening, so, we have discussed internally a little bit more about our safety protocols and had some ongoing discussions with some of our parents, as well as our teachers. In our previous Facebook Live and YouTube stream, we announced that we would not be doing temperature checks at the door. We have changed that position. So, we will be checking temperatures of students as they arrive. More details of what that will look like and how students will enter the building will be directly communicated by building principals as we get closer, which would likely be sometime either late this week or next week. But we will be screening students for temperatures as they come in to the building. So, that is a change from what we said last time. Sorry, I like to say things one time and not change, but in this instance, we felt like this was the safer way to go based on feedback that we got from stakeholders. So, that is a change that we'll have, and we will also have Chromebook returns this week. So, families that checked out a Chromebook return, starting tomorrow, you can bring them here to the central office, and we will take them from you, and we will get them sanitized and ready to go back into service, either in our schools or back out for virtual learners if families need that equipment. So, that will be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week. Are there particular hours, or is it in the afternoons?
1:00 to 3:30.
1:00 to 3:30. So 1:00 to 3:30 for Chromebook return. Even if you are a virtual learner, we would ask that you bring the Chromebook in. We have a new inventory system, so we're gonna have to inventory that Chromebook and also just make sure it's working right and ready to go. So, we will announce that. We'll have a follow-up all call probably later tonight for folks that aren't on the streams tonight, so folks know. But that'll be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week for 1:00 to 3:30, Chromebook return. And again, even if you're virtual, we would ask you to come in, so that we can make sure we get it tagged correctly in our inventory system. Okay, I think that was all of the things I had to put out tonight, and with that, I'll just answer questions that are coming in. So, Mrs. Keeling is here with me tonight, and will serve as the moderator again. Mrs. Carmen Taylor is also serving in that role for our YouTubers, which we appreciate, and yeah, so we'll take questions and answers we can.
Okay, so, one of the questions was about virtual learning, and I think it's just clearing up some confusion. If a parent filled out a virtual learning survey and elected to go virtual learning, that child is automatically accepted as a virtual learner, or is there something else they need to do?
So, that child is accepted, but again, if you're a 6 through 12, excuse me, a 7 through 12 student, we just need you to fill out that additional survey, so that Blue Sky can enroll you on their end as well and can be tracking who's in the program. So you don't need to do anything else. We have marked you in our system as virtual, we are excited to serve your student that way, but that is one additional step that grade 7 through 12 will need to make between now and next week. So, we had about 80, approximately 80 high school students sign up to go virtual, and as of this morning, we had about 50 to 54 already have filled that out. So most of you already done that? Thank you, we appreciate that, and for folks that have not, we would ask you to please log on by the end of this week, so that we can get all those names correctly uploaded and we can get materials ordered.
All right. Also, if a parent elected to send their child to school virtually in their survey, but would now like to switch to in-person learning, are they able to do that, and if so, who do they contact?
So, our position has been, since the beginning, that if you elected to go virtual, that we were gonna hold you to that virtual enrollment until December. So, our rationale for that is, we have to invest money and resources into providing that education. So, on the elementary side, we've taken those numbers, and we've now decided, these teachers are gonna be virtual, these are gonna be in-person. They're already busy preparing those classrooms, getting ready for the start of the school year, and with Blue Sky, we have to work directly with them, and there's a fee for that service that we have to pay for. That's an investment on our end. So, unfortunately, if you elected to go virtually, we're gonna hold you to that until December, and at which point, at that semester break, we can make a change if the family would like.
So we will also note that we seem to be cutting in and out, again, a little bit on Facebook Live.
Okay.
So just a note that we hear you and know.
Sorry. YouTube seems to be a better stream, so if you have access to both, YouTube might be a place to go if you're on Facebook and have equal access, but hopefully this continues to be stable.
Okay, continuing on our virtual learning questions.
Yes.
When will virtual learners be able to pick up their Chromebooks?
So, next week. So we'll get them in this week, we'll get them cleaned up, we'll get them repaired, we'll get them inventoried, and then we will follow up next week with a time for virtual learners that need, that will need to get a Chromebook reissued to them for this year, that will be next week. And we will provide more details on pickup times towards the end of this week, once we have a chance to get them all in this week and survey what we have.
Okay, and if you would like to return a Chromebook from last year, you may do that during this week?
Yes, this week, Tuesday through Thursday, from 1:00 to 3:30. If you have a Chromebook from last year, we would ask you to come in this week and return it, so we can get it ready for the school year.
Okay. Moving on for the moment from virtual learning, will all grades have a staggered start, or will it only be kindergarten?
Yeah, so I should have put that out. That is a change. That's a great question, and I appreciate that. So, we have adjusted a little bit what that will look like. Originally, when we thought we would do staggered start, we would do one day, but we've decided to expand that to four days. So, on Monday and Tuesday, help me out, Mrs. Keeling, Group A will be at school.
Yes.
On Wednesday and Thursday, Group B will be at school, and this will all be communicated on the class list, correct? That will delineate.
Yes, we'll have those posted tomorrow.
On your class list, if you're in-person, it will say if I'm a Group A child or Group B child. If you're a Group A child, you would be B child. If you're a Group A child, you would be on Monday and Tuesday. A Group B child would be Wednesday and Thursday. And then, we'll have all of our learners back on Friday for a full day of school before the weekend. On the high school side, it's staggered. I believe it's 7th and 9th grade will be Monday and Tuesday, 8th and 10th grade will be Wednesday and Thursday. And then, everybody, including juniors and seniors, will join us on that Friday. So, again, Monday and Tuesday would be 7th and 9th grade, Wednesday and Thursday will be 8th and 10th grade. And then, everybody, including juniors, juniors and seniors, will start back on that Friday. So, thank you for the question. That was something that I should have announced at the outset that I did not do. So, thank you for helping draw my memory on that.
We'd also like to let our kindergarten families know that their staggered start will be a little different than our first through 6th grade students. And our kindergarten teachers will be reaching out and making phone calls directly to families to let them know what that will look like.
Great. So, kindergarters, stay tuned. Your teacher will contact you directly about what that first week of school will look like for screening purposes. So, they will contact you directly. If you have not heard from your teacher, is there a certain date, maybe, Mrs. Keeling, that if we haven't heard, that we should maybe call and alert us?
So, our kindergarten classroom, homeroom lists are a little different. We will be screening our kindergarten students with their families, the 24th and 25th.
Okay.
And we will assemble and post class lists on the afternoon of the 25th for families to know. But our staggered start dates are determined by, by the alphabet. So, that's how they're able to go ahead and share that information out.
All right. So, that information should be coming directly to you, Stu, for kindergarten.
So, we would also like to, there have been a couple of questions pop up about this. Will rosters be posted online? And if we could just review again for our elementary families, where our class list will be posted tomorrow at 3:00?
So, I think we can post them online. Is that all right? Or do we post them on the store, the door?
We post them on the doors.
For FERPA reasons, right?
Yes. And so, for, for privacy reasons, we do not post them, we do not post it online.
Okay. So, for FERPA reasons, which is our Educational Records Protection Act, we will post them on the physical door tomorrow by 3:00.
Yep.
What those class lists are, both in-person and virtual. So, those will be available, but they will be available physically at the building. Again, we like, we like to make this information as readily available and accessible to you as possible, but just to make sure we do right by privacy, that's, that's the rule up that will be.
Let's also talk about the high school for just a moment. When will class schedules be released to our 7th through 12th grade students who are going in-person?
Yep. So, Mrs. Miller is actively working on, on those lists and will be contact, will be in contact with families very soon. I think she's been working at my grade level.
Okay. A couple of questions about orientations at the two different campuses. So, one is, will we have any kind of orientation for our grade levels at the elementary school, which I can answer if you'd like? And then, also, will there be any high school orientations this year? And will there be any orientations for our virtual students as well?
Okay. So, I will, I will handle the high school part and then, Mrs. Keeling, I'll probably kick it to you for elementary. So, the reason why we're doing that staggered start that first week is basically so that we can have orientation built in that week. So, there won't be another extra day of orientation. That first week of school, when we have that reduced capacity, will serve as the orientation for those, excuse me, for those folks. So, Blue Sky, my understanding, will be, once we get everybody signed up and we get schedules made, we'll be hosting a virtual orientation meeting for families so that they can communicate directly with you and get everybody on the same page. So, that will be coming, I would expect probably either late next week or the, or early the week after, depending upon how fast we can get everybody to get the surveys completed in the system and everything uploaded. So, that's the high school side for orientation. Talk to us, please, Mrs. Keeling, about elementary.
So, from an elementary perspective, we would encourage our families to connect to or log back into their classroom dojo. We'll be posting, and just posted today, our first grade teachers are doing a virtual orientation that students and teachers, or, sorry, students and families can click through and look at. And so, we would also encourage our families of, of other grade levels to keep an eye out because many of our grade levels will be doing some kind of information share via class dojo to help with a virtual orientation. Virtually, once we are able to establish those lists and those teachers, those, those virtual teachers at the elementary school will also do, most likely, a Zoom orientation or a Zoom meeting to be able to touch base with those kiddos who have elected to go online.
But that would probably, we'll communicate that on our website, but also directly through Dojo.
Yes, absolutely.
So, if, if you're an elementary parent, we cannot talk enough about the importance of having Dojo. We, we will try to double tap and make sure it's on Dojo and on our website and social media, but the primary vehicle for, for very quick communication between families and the school, both teachers and leaders, is through Dojo. So, download the app and, and get connected.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, let's move on to buses. We've had a couple of questions about buses. Can a parent elect to drop off their children and their child in the morning, or children in the morning, and then have them ride the bus home in the afternoon or vice versa?
So, I believe that's the case, but it would be subject to availability. But assuming there's not a space availability issue, then yes. We would need you to communicate that to us, obviously, so we can track that and can get that, can get that in our system. So, please, call us if, if that is what you are planning on doing. It's more important this year than ever because when we put that survey out, we had folks directly tell us if they needed busing or not. And that's the list that we'll be utilizing to rebuild our routes this year so that we can ensure our buses are socially distanced to, to the point that they can under our, under our rules, which is two bus, two kids per seat. So, to make sure that we can get that, we are gonna be constructing bus routes. I think the meeting is tomorrow. So, if, if that applies to you, please, you need to let us know as soon as possible because I've gotta build bus routes with smaller size numbers of kids going out in lots of different places. So, it's, it's a very different year this year. And if you need to change something from what was already communicated to us, get that to us tomorrow. Please call us tomorrow. That's a great question. I appreciate you raising the issue. Okay.
So, this is a long question. I'm going to do my very best to condense it and get to the bulk of it. One of our, our students is asking about the return time after a child has tested positive for COVID-19 and they are concerned that it is too short. So, can you talk a little bit about why that link has been put into our paperwork and why we're communicating if a child has tested positive, they must stay out from this time?
And that would be specifically if they have tested positive?
Uh, yes.
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 So, from our perspective, the, our Public Health Department, the Marietta Belgrade City Public Health Department will be driving all of those decisions. So, I think for right now, what will happen is that Health Department will issue a quarantine order to the person that, that has COVID-19. And then, they will do contact tracing. And folks that have had direct contact with that student would also need to be in quarantine. And then, they will, their professional decision-making will drive how long that should be in place. So, that, that's not a decision that I feel as if I'm qualified to make or which I wanna try to sway either way. I think that's, that's best left to those experts in our city and they will make that call based on the, what, what they see at that time directly to those folks. And from our perspective, students can come back in once the Marietta Belgrade or Belgrade Marietta Health Department has issued an order allowing them to return to school. So, that may be longer or shorter. It would just depend on what, what the Health Department deems is appropriate. I hope that was helpful.
Okay. So, let's circle back around to the buses really quickly. Will there be a sports bus to the elementary this year? So, last year, we would transport our high school and junior high school students who had practices at the elementary school by bus to the elementary school. Will we be offering that services this year?
Yeah. My, my answer right now is, I don't see why not, but it, it might depend also on how many kids are riding and, and where they have to go. So, but I, I think we'll probably be able to work it out and provide that service this year. But I just want to give a slight caveat that if, once we get into the nitty-gritty, to keep our bus sizes where they need to be, it might either not be a service we can do, or if it is a service we can do, it might be one that's delayed a little bit more this year than last year so that those great drivers can get their students to their home locations and then back.
Okay. Have we had any change to our school hours for Belgrade Elementary and Belgrade High School?
No. No, school hours will be the same.
Okay. Also, will breakfast and lunch be available for our virtual students for pickup at any point during the week?
Yes. So, if you are a virtual learning student, you are eligible for free meals regardless of income level through a USDA waiver. So, you don't have to worry about income eligibility for that. We, we will still require folks to fill out that form because we, we have to have that form on file in order to establish our, our, the number of students we serve so that we can get our funding right. So, we still need you to fill out the form, but we can provide those meals to families. And what we are currently planning is that will be a weekly pickup on Monday evening. So, on Monday evening, families could come and pick up and they would receive a week's worth of meals or breakfasts and lunches for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, a breakfast for the following Monday, and then they could pick up that, that Monday evening. So, that's what we're planning for. We will have more details on that soon.
So, let's circle back around for just a moment to some of the information that we've gathered from the Health Department and some of the information that's been shared out by the Governor's Office. Recently, the Governor mandated that all students in grades K through 12 will wear masks in the building.
Yeah.
So, in grades K through 2, now that they are wearing masks, must they wear them at their desks? Will they be wearing them all day?
Yeah. So, so I guess what I'll first say to that question is, obviously, you know, I hate to say it, but Governor Dewine and I have a difference of opinion on that. But, you know, as I talk to Belgrade families, we believe in civic literacy and we believe in following the law and we will comply with what we need to based on what Governor Dewine has asked of us. However, we have still not received in black and white what that order will look like. So, even though Governor Dewine made that announcement last week, the Health Department has not yet followed up with its actual resolution. So, I can't talk too much about what we'll actually do until I have a chance to really read the black and white of what the order will look like and can make some decisions. But, you know, you already know where I stood on, on facial coverings for kids, kids in K through 3 as we were gonna make them recommended rather than required for all of the reasons that many of you at home may be thinking about. But, we will, we will read the actual resolution or the actual order when it comes out and we may make some pivots on it. But we, we do know that that is, we've received a number of calls on that. So, I apologize. Let me get into it, the actual nitty-gritty of the facts and we'll get something out.
So, again, our Health Department orders have told us that we can space students three feet apart. So, one parent is asking why three feet apart and not the six feet apart that it is for everywhere else we go as adults?
Yeah. So, where, where that three feet versus six feet determination came from was the American Pediatrics Association put out a report back in June that talked about how important it is for schools to reopen and to serve students. And as I've listened to Dr. Fauci and others, as well as read the American Pediatrics Association, what they have said to us is that the default should be that schools should reopen unless either we can't do it safely or unless the community spread, local community spread is such that it would not be safe for us to reopen. So, those are two factors very important. So, what the American Pediatric Association did is they said, look, as we review this, the, the risk to students, if we do not allow any in-person on base, and some communities may outweigh the risk of COVID. And so, what they have said is, we understand what schools look like. If, if you cannot get to six feet, because they understand that many of our schools cannot get to six feet, that in their professional opinion, a three feet distance is appropriate because that is, they would rather see school kids in school and avoid all of the harm of kids not in school, even if it means it's three feet instead of six feet. So, I hope, I hope that made that, I, I've tried to explain that clearly, but it's, it's just trying to figure out, we really want schools open. We also know that schools are, are tight on space, particularly older buildings like ours. And so, that guidance came out of the American Pediatric Association where they said, look, we think you should open schools. And if that means you have to be three feet instead of six feet, we think the, the benefits of kids being back would outweigh the risk even at, even at three feet. But, that's also why we've decided to do the facial coverings on top so that in the event that we are three feet apart, that we have that additional Swiss cheese layer, as Dr. Acton would say, that is trying to protect it and mitigate spread.
Will we be offering mask breaks for students?
Yeah. So, mask breaks, I think are appropriate for elementary students. It may be more appropriate at, at the outset of the school year than, than at the middle of the school year, at least for some grade levels. It will be an individual teacher's decision on what a mouse, mouse, what a, what a facial covering break would look like. But, we think that that's an elementary level thing. Middle and high school students, we think can, can, would be just fine using their facial covering without a break during, during the school class time. But, particularly on the elementary side, yes, we understand, we agree. And we've talked with our teaching team about how to do that in a safe way so that kids can get breaks.
Okay. At the high school, will the students be able to use their lockers?
You know, I still don't know on that. And I should know on that because you asked me that two weeks ago. So, I apologize. I am not sure what they have decided on that. So, let me get that information back to you. Could somebody text and see if we can get that answer before we end? So, we're gonna phone a friend and hopefully get that back to you. Thank you.
Also, are, how are we going to notify parents and families about any potential level change? So, if we are to switch to a different learning environment and, and the color changes for our county, how will we notify parents of that?
Yeah. So, we'll, any and all means necessary. So, we'll, we'll call, we'll text, we'll, we'll put it on the Facebook, we'll put it on social media. We'll, we'll do everything we can to communicate that out to families. So, that will, that will happen on a Thursday. And in the event that it shifts, we would, we would deploy every feasible means of communication that we can to get that word out. So, we understand that, that parents would need to know that. And, you know, especially if it's, if it's an orange or red situation because that could trigger some childcare concerns for families. So, we will get that information to you as rapidly as we can on that Thursday.
So, a couple of questions about Virtual Academy and one I might be able, actually, I might be able to help you answer both of them. But, when will we be posting who our virtual teachers are for our elementary building?
So, I believe class rosters are going out tomorrow at 3:00 and we will post in-person class rosters and we will post virtual class rosters with the educator that's assigned.
Yeah.
Is that, is that accurate?
They will all be on grade levels.
And it'll all be on grade levels and it will all be, again, posted physically tomorrow at the building by 3:00 o'clock.
And then, how are we designing specials for the elementary students who have elected to go virtual?
What, what can you, what can we, what can say about that?
I have spoken to, just recently, Mrs. Orkat, our art teacher, and she is designing some specialized artwork for our students to complete who have gone virtual. And I think all of our specials teachers right now are working on ways to reach out to and maintain connection with our virtual learners. So, we're still working on the design of that, but we, we plan on providing some kind of content for our virtual learners to stay connected to those specials that they want so much.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Quickly, with our lunch, one clarification question. Students who attend school in-person will still pay for their lunch?
Correct. Yes. Unless, unless they have the income eligibility form that, you know, says that they qualify for free and reduced, at which they would pay at that rate.
Okay. And then, how much?
And I, for folks that are probably going right now, that's inconsistent. I know it's inconsistent, but it's based on a USDA waiver. So, you know, the only reason why that is different is because the USDA specifically passed a waiver last year when this all happened and they extended it through the calendar year. So, that's the discrepancy. It's based on what the USDA has decided to do.
This is a combined question for you. How many students are we trying to run for classroom and will the students be switching classrooms?
Yeah. So, so that will vary. So, I don't know that I can tell you how many children are we gonna run for a classroom, but I can tell you that, you know, we need to have students three feet apart and that that will drive a lot of the class size. The class size won't really be driven as much by how many students are there, but how, how, how many students can safely be accommodated in that space. So, it won't be a hard number. It will depend on the, on the room location. What was the second part of that?
I'm sorry. Will students be switching classes?
Uh, yeah. So, will students be switching classes? So, at the high school and middle school, the answer is yes. At the elementary school, my understanding is that the teachers, at least at the upper grades, will be moving and students will stay stationary. So, middle and high, yes. The high school or the elementary, no. It looks like the, the teachers will be the ones moving through the building and the hallways, not the students. And I have just used my Lifeline, phoned a friend, it's the only one I get, and the answer to lockers is no. So, student lockers will not be utilized this year. As I, there was, I read, I'd read earlier today, a really great graphic. As I, there was, I read earlier today a really great graphic that somebody could have put out that said that lockers, in particular, are one of the highest risk activities you could do in schools. So, yeah, so that's the answer on lockers. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor, for finding that for me. And for, I think I got a text from Mr. Van Pelt, too, so I appreciate, appreciate the shout out. Thank you.
So when we're talking about lunch, it will look different in both campuses?
Yes.
How will it look at the high school and how will it look at the elementary school?
Yeah, so at the high school, they have put additional, did I flick out again on Facebook?
It looks like we're pausing again on Facebook. Yep, but you're rolling now.
Am I rolling now?
Yep, looks like it.
Okay, we're good?
Yes.
So at the high school, they have brought in additional chairs and tables so that we can, am I?
Oh, you're good, I'm sorry.
That I can spread, so we can have more students spread out. And then I believe that they have made the decision for upper level students, some other decisions for them about how they can not be in that part of the building. So Mr. Pepper will be directly communicating that in an email to high school students soon. And I believe at the elementary school...
Students will be eating in their classrooms with their group of children that are in their homeroom, so they will not move to the cafeteria. Ms. Kenny has been working diligently to figure out how to get those hot lunches up to children who order hot lunch, and so those will be delivered to the classroom during their lunch period. And our children will also be able to, of course, bring their lunchboxes and eat from their lunchboxes in the classroom, too.
Yep, so that will be all in the classroom. I cannot see my video, but I'm still rolling.
You have just paused since you just said that.
Boy, this is frustrating. The YouTubers, again, they're going crazy.
Looks like you're back on.
All right, let's keep rolling.
Be at home tonight.
Yeah, let's just keep rolling.
Okay, let's see, we talked about the cafeteria. We will, our parents would like to know if students can wear face shields.
So if there are individual circumstances for a face shield, we will consider them, but we really think that they need to be a cloth mask or a disposable mask. So that is to keep the particles trapped over the face. So if there's a specialized circumstance that will require a face shield, a face shield would be better than nothing and we would talk to you directly about that. But it really needs to be a facial covering. The only caveat I might see there is for our K-3 students, maybe there could be some flexibility there as we've seen a shift, but again, I can't commit to anything until I review the governor's guidance on it.
What is, what about a child who has special needs? Do they have to wear a mask?
Yeah, so if your student has some type of rationale, a bona fide health condition, we said in our guidance, that would not permit them to do a facial covering, that's fine. We would ask you to communicate with us and that you get us information from your physician that can opine on that, and then we would allow a waiver in that instance. And I think even the governor's resolution talks to reason. So I guess that is one thing I could caveat. If the governor is very stringent in his order on what I can and cannot do, that may adjust that flexibility because I did note in the letter that he posted for the American Pediatric Association, it was fairly tight on what would be permissible reasons not to have a facial covering. But I know that autism was one that was specifically mentioned and other behavioral disorders. So, yeah, if you have a bona fide health condition, please just get in touch with the school. Let us, give us a copy of what your doctor's saying about your child's condition and then we can work directly with you on an accommodation for that.
Okay, give us an update on the air conditioning installation at the high school.
Oh, yeah, so it is going well. I heard earlier today, am I still going? Is it still puttering?
You're going.
Yeah. I heard today that there is actually air conditioning on the third floor of Lawton as we speak, which is a great day, like when you put the American flag on the moon, it just feels like we've done something momentous today. So, and tomorrow, my understanding is that AEP is going to come in and they're going to put in the new, the new power line and transformer equipment that they need. And then hopefully, I think most of the internal work has been done and we should be able to flip the switch and have it operational by the end of the week, assuming we don't have any unforeseen issues. So I cannot speak highly enough of Mr. True's efforts guiding that. Our maintenance staff, Jeff and Ryan, have been wonderful to work with the contractors and we're very, very pleased to get this up and running in time. So unless there's some other curveball, we think we're tracking along great on that project. We also had to repair a portion of Lawton roof and that work has been completed as well.
So this is a question regarding our distance expectations at the buildings. Will three feet be the standard distance or will it only be when it is not possible to reach six feet?
No, so I want it as far apart as possible. So I don't want you to think about three feet as the ceiling, three feet is the floor. So if we can get further than that, then I'm all for it. And given some of our virtual numbers, it looks like we'll be able to do that in some grade levels. We can space out more students because of the number of kids that have elected to go virtual, but no, I would like just as much as the folks at home to have six feet if we can, but it should not be anything less than three feet, if that makes sense.
If a parent would like to switch their child from in-person learning to virtual learning, how do they accomplish that at this point?
Yeah, so if your family wants to switch from in-person to virtual, you need to contact my office, the superintendent's office. So you can either send myself or Ms. Pam Hammond an email or call me directly on that and we will get that information. You can also call your school if you feel more comfortable with that and talk with them directly and we can make that switch.
How will we be taking temperatures at the schools?
Yeah, so we'll have a forehead scanner. So it won't be the one that kind of goes over the side and it won't be like in mouth or under the armpit. Do they still do that, armpit? That's what we did when I was growing up. I don't know, I don't know if you still do that or not. But it will be a scanning thermometer that will just scan the forehead. It will be contact, that process will be contactless.
This is a question that we have about backpacks.
Yeah.
So fully loaded backpacks are very heavy and some students have after-school practice gear. How is this going to be addressed?
I'm assuming probably because of the high school and the large amount. So, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to answer that. I know that as I try to open schools, we have to make lots of decisions and one of the decisions we've had to make based on our size and to mitigate spread has been lockers. So we would encourage you to pack light if you have, maybe there's a vehicle that you can store some of the materials in, if it's like an after-school practice thing. But I wish I had better guidance for families on that note, but it's something we'll have to all problem solve through as we look to reopen safely.
When we're thinking about our virtual academies and our virtual learning, will there be set hours? Does it fall within the school day? Will students be online for six hours a day?
So I can definitely answer that students will not be online six hours per day. We are still working on specifics for what that experience will look like, and I don't want to make any announcement tonight because I haven't, we just got our teachers selected and we haven't had a chance to meet with them yet and to talk about that expectation. So we can announce more specifics on that soon, but I can say, at least on the elementary side and not at the high school, it would not be like a six hours in front of your computer experience, but nor will it be a complete, on Sunday night, you get a list of materials and lessons that need to be turned in on Friday and there's no Zoom meetings, there's no recorded lectures or anything like that. So it'll be somewhere in the middle there. But I can also say that we've heard a lot of feedback from families that they would like to have more Zoom interactions with peers and with teachers and more lectures, and I completely agree. But again, I don't want to get too specific on it until I have a chance to talk to my team and norm that with them.
So we've had a couple of questions about band at the elementary school, and so several of our parents have asked if we'll still be running our band program at the elementary school. And if you don't mind, I can provide the answer for that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, Mrs. Keely, wonderful, please.
Our sixth grade students who are already established in our band program will be able to participate in band this year with Mr. White. And then we are working on a plan to still welcome fifth grade students who are interested in to learn an instrument and practicing an instrument, but we're trying to figure out the best way to do that safely and give all of the children who are interested access. So fifth grade is still a work in progress. Sixth grade is established, we will be running sixth grade band this year.
So we love our band, the pride of Belbury, it's near and dear to all of our hearts and we understand how important it is to have a stable pipeline for the development of kids, but this is another place, kind of like the lockers, whereas we are trying to build a schedule that works and we're trying to keep students safe, that the fifth grade part may look differently than it's looked in years past. But we are committed to trying to give some type of experience to those students, but it may not be hardwired into the schedule like it has been in previous years.
Just a clarification, who should people call if they need to make some bus adjustments?
Yeah, so I would contact, I would contact the superintendent's office. You could contact your school as well, but either way, but if you contact our office, it'll probably be more easy for us to get it directly to Mr. True as he looks to make bus changes. So, yeah, please, but again, please call us as soon as possible or email me tonight. You can find my email address on our website and just let us know so that we can, we really need that information as soon as possible so that we can get this all planned and ready to roll by the first day of school.
What's the phone number here at the central office?
And more than likely, my secretary Pam Hammond, who is exceptional, will answer your call and will serve you.
This is a question about a student who has, has to be tested. If they, if a student has to be tested and they have siblings, do all of the children in the house have to stay out of school?
So say that again?
A child needs to be tested for COVID.
Okay.
If they're sent home or a parent believes they need to be tested, should all of the siblings stay home while they're waiting on the test results as well?
So once...
Should the home quarantine?
So one student has been sent home...
Or a parent suspects that they have.
Or a parent suspects that they have it, but the other siblings, yeah, so my answer would be, we would appreciate greatly if everybody could stay home. So if we suspect that there's a student that has COVID and has been either kept home or sent school, definitely, you know, so that while that test comes available, we can mitigate that risk. Yeah, great question. And from our perspective, folks, if your kiddo wakes up and they're kind of borderline, if they, you know, they have a runny nose and they're complaining about that and a sore throat, we would ask you to just be really cautious and conservative this year and maybe just keep that kiddo home for a day. If symptoms improve, send them, but if they come to us and they present with two or more symptoms and we have to send them home, then it could be like a 10-day situation for us to monitor that case. So it's really important this year, if you feel like, this year more than ever, if your student has a fever, definitely, just keep them home and monitor them rather than send them because we may have to send them home and that would trigger additional protocols.
There's a seventh grader who needs to change from in-person learning to virtual learning. Would it be Blue Sky for them or a different program?
So there is a provider that needs to move from in-person to virtual. At this point, we will utilize Peak in district to serve that student. Yep, so it will be, it will be a virtual learning experience, but it will be internal through the Peak system rather than at the Blue Sky Academy. So for folks that signed up that initial two-week window, we had to make that investment, we had to sign a contract, we had to get those kids ready and enrolled, and for folks from now, it will still be virtual experience, but it will not be through the Blue Sky Academy.
How will families gain access to the beginning of the year paperwork if they're going virtual?
So there's usually not a lot of beginning of the year paperwork as far as like enrollment forms, but...
We're always thinking about lunch forms.
But any forms like that, we would, my suspicion would be we will use Dojo to communicate that out directly to families. Would also probably be loaded up into a classroom for families to access digitally.
I think we're also trying to upload some of those to the district website for easier access.
Oh, that would be great, yeah, that would be wonderful.
Okay, how, let's talk a little bit about our cleaning procedures. So thinking about students in the building switching classes and then also after school is out, how will our buildings be cleaned?
Yeah, so we have been working with our cleaning vendor to get approved COVID-19 related sanitation, cleaning supplies that have been shown through testing to eliminate the virus. So there's been a little bit of change in the type of materials that we're going to use this year to sanitize. High-touch surfaces will need to be cleaned in the classroom between students, so we'll have wipes available to wipe down desks. We've asked for students to help wipe down desks, wipe down the light switch just in the classroom just to keep everything safe. And then at night, we would bring in our custodial crew who would clean the buildings but would also do another, disinfect it with that material. I'll also add that our bus drivers would also need to, at the end of their routes, sanitize their bus seats so that at the end of the day, it's ready, it's ready to roll. So we have hired additional custodial personnel to make that happen this year and, you know, again, are committed to making sure that our facilities are physically clean as needed so that we can keep our students and staff healthy and involved in class.
Okay, this is an important question for us to consider as we are working with our virtual students. Will they be included in the yearbook and class photos this year?
Yeah, I, we would love that. So I don't know, I don't know that we would get the kids all together for a virtual, for a class photo of virtual students. If parents felt comfortable with that, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but it might look different, but yes, they're our student, they would be in our, in our yearbook and we would make that happen. I just don't know that we would have a class photo, it would just depend on the comfort level of everybody. Or maybe just later in the year, if things look better and we've made other advancements that we can get a safe photo, we would do it. We are over the hour, so maybe two or three more questions.
I think we've got two more questions.
Yep.
So this is about water bottles. We are asking our students to bring water bottles to school because we will be closing our water fountains.
Yes.
How will the students refill their water bottles?
Yeah, so we've been, we are in the process of installing water bottle fillers in the building. So the water fountains will be turned off, but we'll be installing water, water, water water, water bottle fillers so that students can have access to hydration. So we'd ask that you, this year, pack, your student can pack a water container.
Just some general scheduling questions on either end of campus. So if you have, have specific scheduling questions about your students' class lists and class schedule, is it okay to call the high school and ask to help, ask them to help navigate that information for in-person learners?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah. If an elementary student has questions about that, contact the elementary building, and if a high school student has questions about that, contact the high school building, for sure.
Okay. I think that that is, we've covered everything to the best of our ability at this point. Of course, you have been answering questions as well throughout the week, so.
Anything else on the YouTube side of the house?
Nope.
Okay, so like we did last time, we will go back through and try to provide answers if there's questions that didn't get answered thoroughly tonight, or if we can have something more to add, we'll do that. Our hope is to continue to do these throughout the year so that we can keep families informed with how school is going and so that we can also hear, you know, back from folks about what their experience is looking like. So we really want this year to be successful. We are excited for kids to be back, both in-person and virtually, and we are committed to making sure that we have a great year and that all of our students are served as safely as we can. So thank you for tuning in and for your feedback, and we'll talk again soon. Thank you.